Three?
I said, yeah. We're doing liquor this week.
Morning, everybody. Uh, it's eight fifteen. We'll call the meeting to order. The auditor is preparing us for the liquor licenses we've got.
Okay, so we have a renewal for the back room lounge. We have one for Toby Jacks and one for Keg Creek Brewing.
You want to approve them all at once or you want to do it separately?
Well, we can name each one. I mean, if you, unless you're thinking you're not going to approve any. We can approve them all, but just by naming them.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes as presented. And the three liquor license, liquor or beer, I guess, make any difference.
And I so second it.
We have, go ahead, Richard.
We've got what, back room?
We have the, the back room. And we have Toby Jacks and Keg Creek Brewing.
Okay. Good. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, minutes, and liquor license renewals. Is there any discussion on those? Hearing that, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. Visitors, you here for business or just to see us or?
I ran into him at the fair. Well, we almost did. Uh, I, I just said, well, why don't you come in and give us an upgrade or up? You know, I mean, uh, if you want him to speak so he can go back to work or whatever.
Yeah, sure.
Just kind of let us know what's going on out there and, and what they're doing and, you know, what's going to take place in the next year or so, so.
Pretty exciting.
You're with Waste Connections?
I'm with Waste Connections. So I'm Justin Franks. I'm the assistant district manager for the Los Hills landfill. Um, and I just came in this morning to give you guys an update where we're at, what we're doing, where we're going. So currently, we are putting in a, a gas system and a flare, uh, at the landfill. It's not mandatory. It's just something we're trying to get ahead of, try to be a good neighbor because that will control some of the odor. Uh, we're drilling around thirty-five wells and those will be plumbed in and flared off. And potentially in the next year to two years, it could generate more jobs, uh, based off of if the gas quality and quantity. We could put in, um, like a, two options. You could even put a little power plant in or they'll clean it up and pump the methane into, and make natural gas out of it and pump it into the pipeline.
So there's going to be a bunch of flares or it's all piped into one flare?
One flare.
Okay.
Uh, two blowers, so you'll rotate blowers so that if one goes down, you always have another blower that you can turn on. Um, and then as we go, we'll, every year, we'll add more and more wells to the system. Uh, next year, I think they're scheduled with another fifteen wells.
Really?
Yeah.
And you go thirty-five feet deep?
Uh, no, the, some of them are twenty to thirty-deep, some are a hundred and five feet deep. It all just depends. We'll put them on the slopes, they're on the top, they'll be all around the landfill.
Burn it off on the east side.
So you can have a?
I, I don't need any more light over my way.
So in the future, can we pipe it?
Uh, potentially. It all depends on the quantity and the quality. There's got to be, it's got to be enough gas being generated, which there's a lot of waste in place where roughly three million, um, yards of waste is in place since nineteen seventy-two. So some of the older waste, well, you'll generate really good gas off of it and newer waste, not as much. So we won't be putting as many, um, wells in on, I guess it would be the, the north east or northwest side, uh, because it's just, that's where we're currently working. So there's just not going to be very much gas generation. But, um, it's.
What a great thing for the county.
It, it, potentially, it could be very great for the county.
Exactly.
And so hopefully, we get good gas and then it will, should help with, like, so I know we've had odor complaints out the landfill and this is just kind of try to, to curb some of that as well because the gas has to go somewhere. And as it's generating, it's going to take the past of lethal resistance. So if we can capture that, that will take some of the, the odorous smell away from the landfill as well.
Justin, now that you're here and we're real close on the buyouts and starting demo, you guys will be able to handle?
So I, I potentially, yeah, I mean, how much and how fast is, is it planning on coming in? That's, I guess, the question we have.
I think it'll be a closer, we'll probably need to sit down with you all, the contracting contractors, whether the board's like contractors, that's probably going to be a critical piece because it'll be the, the, uh, there is a time window that a lot of this has to be done once contracts are signed and when new properties are bought. But, uh, I would say once the prime contractors are identified, then I would say definitely they're going to want to meet with you all and determine their work, their workload and then keep us informed. It's kind of like we did with re-removal, um, after the flood. Uh, Park Trac Station got involved in that with us, helping us. Of course, their loads are very small because their trucks are very small. So there's like hundreds of loads going. But, uh, uh, but these will probably be larger trucks, not semis, but probably a larger type semi.
And it will be?
And it will be, well, there'll be some things that be mitigated, I'm guessing. I don't know, but a lot of it will go there.
So have you guys done kind of like a survey, an estimate of tonnage or anything like that?
Not yet, but there's, was, how many homes are left? We've got fifty, sixty?
I was going to say, they're still in the process of getting?
Yeah, we're still in the process of negotiating new houses, so, uh, um.
Sixty homes.
We can handle the unincorporated, sir.
That's, yeah, we don't know what PJ is.
We can handle the material. It would just be nice to know that it's coming because if I need to bring in employees, that's one great thing about Waste Connections is we're all over. So if we're going to get a big influx in tonnage and I need more employees, they'll send what they call a blue crew and they'll help us while the project's going on.
We'll give you an hour or two notice.
Perfect.
Well, Fremont, has they started hauling and such like? I mean, do they go?
We don't get Fremont.
You're, okay, they go to it now.
They have their own landfill, don't they?
Yeah, Fremont's got their own landfill. So we, we only take waste from, we'll take some from out of state, but then we also get Mills, Potawatomi, and Montgomery County. If it comes from any other county in Iowa, it goes through the comp land. And if their landfill won't accept it, then we can get DNR approval to take it, but it has to go through those steps.
Very cool. Good.
Good.
Any other questions?
That is going to be great.
Well, and you might give them a little, you know, uh, as far as putting in a different road and things that's coming up, what you've acquired, what you're going to, if I remember right, you're going to put a kind of a barrier along thirty-four, maybe some trees and stuff on it to help.
So we're working with the county and DOT, um, and potentially there's a purchase of property, uh, two hundred acres to the east of us.
East?
Yep. And.
You guys can have that road.
We'll get the road. So it makes it a lot easier if we own that property for the county to give the road to us and then we can make changes. So one of the things we're going to do if we get the property and get the road is the first four hundred feet of our, of two hundred and ninetieth street, we will pave that to mitigate dust right away. Uh, and then in the next three to five years, working with DOT, we want to move our entrance further to the east away from those, that residential, those residential houses. But they're doing a traffic study and everything because I think they're going to have to put in turn lanes and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, so let the turn lane extended.
But we'll move the entrance away and, but in the meantime, as soon as we get it, we're going to pave the road, the first force, first four hundred feet of it.
Sure.
Yeah. Very nice.
Well, you know, if you get your road moved to the east, uh, then we could put turn lanes in from the east going into, at housing developments, stuff. That's always, that's such a bottleneck there with you guys, them, and you know, it's just, there's times when you look down there, you're going, okay, I hope everybody gets, I mean, they'll be backed up for quarter mile.
And right now, they're doing construction just down the road from us, so it's one lane. So then you get hit with a huge line of traffic and that's a, it's all bottleneck right there.
And of course, a person almost destroyed his life.
Can you rail road in the state?
I don't like it.
Oh, great.
Good.
This is going to be exciting. Yeah.
There's a lot going on. So the, the gas system should be finished and running, um, they're saying next two months.
Oh, great.
So all the wells, except they got four wells to drill left and then they're going to start piping it. So Mid-Americo is out, installed power, power lines down to our ponds where the flare's going to be hooked up, so we're making progress.
Let us know if we'll have to come out there and take a look.
Yeah, as soon, as soon as I know when the completion is and we're going to fire it up, uh, we'll, I'll, we'll invite everybody out for it to order up the landfill and show it off.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Call us every day then. I'm, I'm going to head off back to work.
Yeah.
Have a great day.
You too.
Yeah, I just thought that gas deal, that's going to be, well, it will cut down on the smell going to the north, so.
I was going to ask him, what's the life expectancy of that landfill?
Well, now?
No, I mean, how long before that landfill's, based on their usage to date? Because sometimes these landfills, of course, they keep buying land, get permission by land, they just keep building, but someplace because of encroachment, I know that, uh, when they started landfills, I know when I was out in the west, east coast, Norfolk, between Norfolk and Virginia Beach, they had one right off the interstate and right between, and Virginia Beach started expanding, you know, uh, development and it developed all around the landfill. The landfill, uh, basically met its life expectancy based on the land they could have. They turned it into park. They've got a, they've got a, a burn off.
Seriously?
It burns it and they have tapped it for methane. And, uh, they got picnic tables down below, they got steps going up for lookout. That's, that's where I get this Mount Trashmore, because they call that Mount Trashmore out there at Virginia Beach. That's why I call it Mount Trashmore out here, uh, because, but that's a repurposing from an environmental standpoint, uh, and it's monitored all the time and it's owned by the, the city park service.
Well, if, I, I know what they bought and basically they're in their second forty acres in forty years. The first, first part of the landfill was not, I guess, called structured right. I mean, the way they buried stuff and things the first ten years wasn't like they do it now, you know, and.
Right.
And how they separate things, uh.
Like that chicken?
Yeah. Yeah. Got to have some good methane, you know?
They lay a rubber mat on the bottom, do they not?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's.
There's specific guidelines.
There, there's several liners. They started out with a, I don't know if you want to call it pea gravel or whatever, lay it down. Then when they put this nap liner, it's about this thick, and then they got them little self-propelled sewing machines that just, it just blows my mind. Runs down there for, oh, sixty, seventy, eighty yards, you know? Sewes this stuff together. Then they put a, I don't know whether it's gravel or just what, it's clean rock that they put over that and they start, that's the way they've got a, and it's all piped. Underneath that liner, it's all piped over to their pit. Boy, when they broke them open last year, oh, that wasn't nice. But no, they, they run a rather, rather unique operation, really they do.
They really do.
Uh, to watch them, the other day I was timing them, every eight minutes, they'd put one of them atomic trucks in the air and dump it.
Every eight minutes?
So, and I, and you know, we get paid by the tonnage that goes through there for our taxes, so.
Well, they'll just fix the roads.
Well, we get that turned over to them over there, that'll take a headache off of us, so. But I think anything we can do with, with getting their new road and turning lanes and stuff off of thirty-four.
That's right.
Because that, coming over that overhead, if you move that closer to that overhead, that's really going to make a bottleneck, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor updates?
Uh, I sat in on two NACO meetings last week. One was local NACO around here and, okay, we got a hundred and twenty-five million dollars and then we got a one point two five billion dollars given to the state.
State.
Okay, the state is setting on this and most of the states are in the same predicament. They, they want a clearinghouse, I call it a clearinghouse, I don't know what else you can call it, uh, someone to distribute this money. And what I, what I said and some of the other members said, why do we want to pay out a, probably a ten percent? I suppose is what they charge to.
Oh, an agency.
Handle this? Most of them do. I mean, I figure one point two five billion, that's what? One point.
Lot of zeros.
Lot of zeros behind it, but the state doesn't want to be held liable for distributing this. I'm going, oh, then good, just give it to us counties, we'll distribute it, we'll take care of it, you know? I mean, that's the bit, that's the big.
Too much of a problem.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, uh, then of course, the governor give out fifty million dollars to, to mental health. And I still don't know how they think this is going to work, but they give thirty million to mental health. That's nine dollars and fifty cents per capita, which gets us nowhere. No one is, no one in, uh, the state is below twenty, twenty-two dollars per capita. And then they give ten million to the providers just to, I, I call it a cookie, you know, here, we'll help you out this much.
So, Richard, you're saying each region got?
No, no. Yeah, each region got a chunk of the thirty million.
Of the thirty million.
So there's twenty, there's fifteen, sixteen, it'd be sixteen regions.
For mental health?
For mental health. Uh, then you got the providers, they got ten million and then they also put out ten million to substance abuse, you know, to help that category out. And, uh, they're supposed to be, well, they didn't say how many million coming out later on here for children's mental health, so I don't know. It's a, it's a battle.
Is that the CARES Act money?
Yeah. Yeah, all this, the, the hundred and twenty-five million and the one point two five billion is, is all CARES Act money, you know, and, you know, what?
Now, will they put any of that on the public health, county public health?
I have no idea.
Nobody knows.
No, because nobody, nobody set any rules or regulations once the county gets it, what they can do with it.
Yes, very good. It's just like any other state money grants, they're going to have to create criteria for us to manage.
You know, like the, the flood relief money we got, we can't pay any old bills or anything like that or buy equipment and stuff with it. It has to be infrastructure priorities only and I don't really want to call them priorities, but you know, it's, well. But it'll be interesting in the next few months. But I mean, public health could, could stand a big shot in the arm, we all could, but why are they dragging their feet? They've had this money now for almost going on three months?
Well, maybe it's collecting good interest.
Right. It sure does, yes.
But it would be a challenge, you know, it'd be up, uh, one point two five billion.
Well, you know, why would it be any different than the way the flood recovery fund was set up? So you have to say, here's what I want, or why would it be any different than any other board or app, you know, you have to apply for it. What do you, what is your need? What is your, you know, and then, okay, I, I don't know, seems fairly easy to me.
And then I also, you know, we've been working on this, I kind of told these two, we've been working on this FEMA money that, you know, nobody's getting paid. And I finally got a call back from, uh, Joni Ernst's office and, uh, I've talked to Cory, he's going to bring me a.
Well, good, because Donna Berry contacted me and wants me to collect all the information and then send it on to her, so.
I will, I will, I will collect it, but I mean.
I've got her email.
I, I thought it'd be better if we put it on the engineer's letterhead or something and sent out to Joni's office and then Mike, you know, can't think of his last name, uh, that called me, uh, he's going to take it directly to the FEMA office out there and want, and that way he can say, well, Mills County has this problem, why are, why is this going on? And we're not the only ones, Fremont County, uh, all three of us up and down here, Pot, Mills, Fremont, we're not getting paid. We, we get a new, new person comes in and you got to start all over. Why?
Well, you, you got to bring the new person up to date. It's happened.
No, you shouldn't have to, Larry.
I know, you shouldn't have any.
But you have a new person every time you turn around.
You shouldn't have a new person.
The new person is asking, on the GMU side, I haven't dealt with them much on the county side, but on the GMU side, it's, it's the same thing that I'm hearing from Richard. It's, it's, you supply the information, we need this, this, and this. You give them this, this, and this, and then they, you go through three to six months of time and then they put a new person in there and then they come back and say, we need this, this, and this, and we said, we already gave it to you. Well, if they don't put it in the system the way the other person puts it in the system, then they can't find it and it's a pain.
Or the interpretation changed a little bit.
It's, it's just a.
Well, I have good news for Cory.
Should be the same rule, though.
Well, Senator Grassley came and.
Explain to him what a mess this is?
Well, it started off with Andy Young. Well, Larry Wyndham had a few comments on it and then Larry, Andy Young, he probably had a five-minute spiel on it. I mean, and everything was to the T. I mean, he, you know, and Senator Grassley was about to speak and I says, sorry, Senator, I says, I want to piggyback on his for the county. I said, we're having the same problems and I went through mine and I says, I says, I hope you have something you can do for us. So about the time he was to speak, why, uh, Mr. Embry at back of me says, sorry, Senator, he says, I want to piggyback on those two. He says, I have the same problem. That's about the time the senator looked at Donna Berry and says, didn't we just go through this in Fremont County? She says, yes. Well, he says, there's a problem somewhere. He says, we need to, so they're looking to, I mean, it, it's too bad that we have to go this high up.
And wait this long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're almost a year in with, with Pacific Junction and different, well, more than that with what Cory's done in places, you know, uh.
Well, I have good news for Cory because the city of PJ called me. I was going to wait until he gets here. The city of PJ called me and wanted to know who they needed to make the check out. Said Cory keeps bugging them about the demo money and, or, you know, the.
Where the supervisor's chair?
Yeah, just send it to us.
Yeah. I said, just make it out to Mills County. So he's going to be getting this check from them. I guess I think PJ's been sitting on it for a while, you know?
Sorry to take up your time. Go ahead, Mills. I'm done. I quit.
What do you got, Larry?
You know, you start first.
All right, we've got some COVID-nineteen data for you to take a look at. Um, Pot, I wanted to give you some positive case numbers from Mills County.
Yay.
As of date, we had two thousand three hundred and twenty individuals tested, two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight of those individuals tested negative. As of Friday, we have fifty-eight individuals who have tested positive. I think we had three new cases on Friday. We have had no cases since Friday, which, um.
Not going.
Every day without a case is a very good day in the public health world. Uh, our positivity rate is two point six percent. Uh, we like that number to be under three percent. That's a good sign for our county. We have thirty-four individuals who are recovered and the Iowa Department of Public Health is also tracking serology tests. In Mills County, we've had forty-nine total tested with two positive. As far as regional hospital data, so as Mills County, we track our hospital data as an entire southwest Iowa region. So in our region, we currently have eight patients who are hospitalized, four that are in ICU, one that was admitted in the last twenty-four hours. Total inpatient beds available in our region is two hundred and twelve, ICU beds available is twenty-five, total ventilators available is sixty, and number of patients with COVID-nineteen who are currently on a ventilator is one.
So the regional, okay, that doesn't, I mean, are we included in this number part? I mean, are we one of those, one of those eight that are hospitalized or been, I mean, Mills County is?
Yes. Um, any other questions on that? All right, we'll just get going through then. So as far as long-term care, you know, that's something we track ongoingly and we want you to know that right now we continue to have no outbreaks of COVID-nineteen with our long-term care facilities. I attached a couple of maps for your review. These are relatively new data collection points that I thought were interesting, so it's risk level assessment by county. Mills County is currently orange because we're ten point four cases per hundred thousand population and that's on a seven-day rolling average. The state of Iowa is also in the orange category with fifteen point three. And then there's a little graph below that shows the numbers and why we're in the orange. So you can see how we are within the state and how we compare to other counties. On the back, number five, you can see that these COVID risk levels provide a map that helps Mills County Public Health and our community members know where we are. The orange level for our county and most of the state communicates the intensity of effort that we need to control COVID-nineteen. There are strategic choices and interventions that we can put into place to suppress the disease. We're currently doing a high number of testing and tracing, which is good and Mills County's numbers are high. We are also advocating a combination of physical distancing. We are really doing a big push for the wearing of masks anytime that you can't maintain six-foot physical distance or you're going to be in close contact for more than ten minutes or there's even a chance of that. We are really encouraging our partners and our community to do that and other infection control, um, efforts that we can take. We want you to know that Mills County has good capabilities right now for testing, tracing, and supporting isolation. We have good capabilities for protecting the vulnerable in our county and treating the ill. Currently, anyone is able to have access to a test regardless of symptoms. The turnaround time for tests is approximately forty-eight hours. Sometimes it's faster, occasionally it's slower based, based on volume. And we currently have a positive test ratio of less than three percent. There's no questions on that. I just wanted to very quickly, um, give you an update on the governor. There was a new proclamation that was issued on Friday. Um, this entire proclamation is centered on the return to learn strategy from our governor for the state. All schools in the state of Iowa are mandated to have a brick and mortar plan for all students to return to a physical building. Parents can opt for online learning if that's what they prefer, but at least fifty percent of all core topics have to be taught in the school setting. So that's a big push for our state and for the governor. And then there were a whole host of easings of regulations in regards to substitute teaching. And they're all available here for, for your review. I'll just leave that one documented with you. Um, the other thing that we talk a lot about with our community partners and we take a lot of questions and phone calls at public health is Mills County public health involvement in schools return to learn as far as health and safety is concerned. We are on the health and safety committee for the Glenwood School District and also the East Mills School District. How schools return and what their plan is, is largely left to the local level by our state governance. For Mills County Public Health, I know I've, I've, um, talked to you briefly about it before, but, um, we really are adapting the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance for return to learn. They, it's, it's a medical model. It's very specific in relation to health and safety and the whole child. So when we do health and safety meetings or we give guidance to schools, we lean in on this document, gives a lot of good guidance, medical approach focused on the whole child. Leave that document if you care to review it. That's my update, unless you have any other questions or Larry?
I guess.
We don't have anything to do with Fremont Mills as far as any public health or any, any issues?
Yeah, there's public health there. You probably saw Risen Sun opened up yesterday with, uh, an outbreak. That's still, needs to be a concern we have to watch. I know, um, Julie's team has been close contact with all our facilities here, you know, to keep, keep them supported, keep the good, uh, you know, ear on the ground, basically to see what they're up to. And I know the parents, fiduciaries, and power attorneys that have people in these facilities in the county, you know, they, they want to get some level of normalcy and I know that they're trying to do that, uh, but there's, because of the conditions, status we're in right now, moving to positive direction is being hampered by that.
This has to be done on that.
Last ten days was not a good ten days for us and you think because of the number that we're coming, coming to light. And you think because of the number that we're coming, coming to light. I think that mass gathering piece and close contact, other category is, is an issue with us as many other counties or other states. You know, I don't think you can fix it entirely. You educate, you use media, you use other forms of, you know, mouth, you know, just basically you're talking to somebody until it affects the individual themselves, then it doesn't get home as much, I think. And then there's varying cases of this. I, we realize is that some are to one extreme, the other ones are mild. So then people think, well, that was mild, so, you know, I can weather this and suck it up. And this is not a big deal. Well, it could be a big deal and it, I think a lot of.
So what was the numbers at the Risen Sun?
I don't know.
16.
16.
Wasn't it 22 and 40?
Yeah. It just, it jumped right out there and grabbed them. And so, you know, and they've had other facilities up there of concern. But the, we're, I don't know whether we're in the middle of the game here or the end of the game. We're not at the end of the game, but not where we are. But something like that, we do not want to start here.
That's right.
And that's a concern I have. This thing with the return to learn, I know the superintendents are really concerned. The state and all that Julie was talking about, they might have more guidance later on this to answer some of the questions. But of course, we'd like to see guidance sooner than later. And I'm pretty sure the school's superintendents would like to see it also if there's something that's going to change or whatever. So I think the school board met last night. And I'm not sure the results of that, that they did meet. Because there was a couple of questions they had, the previous meeting that had to be further investigated and resolved. So I know on Nebraska's side, they were just doing brick and mortar. And I know a couple of the districts over there are now offering a virtual option also. Right now, it looks like they're testing their plans to go that route. So I think, I think next year may look like that starting now. So.
You might notice on the state COVID-19 database that our numbers in Mills County do not exactly match. I think if you go to that database, you'll see it. It's reporting that we have 60 cases. Though our numbers will always ultimately match, but sometimes we have somebody who has an address in Mills, but ultimately they're not currently residing here. So if you notice that those numbers aren't in exact alignment, we are aware of it. And then through our surveillance, we get that sifted out.
Could be a home of record thing. So I think we just got to keep the push on, use every means possible to not be a broken record, but at least be supportive. And hopefully the public, as we go back in the school setting, that our youth, you know, respects that and understands as young adults that they want to help beat this. It takes them to help beat this also. And I think if they go with that attitude with faculty and just the public in general support, I think we can at least mitigate it, you know, and because, you know, we're going to have to live with this, you know, how long? And it's dumb, it's like a life like flu, influenza. So we just got to figure it out.
But they're not making the little munchkins in elementary wear a mask, are they?
Well, I'm not sure what the final decision was yesterday. I think it's third through 12.
Third through 12.
Yeah. But you know, the schools have a very complicated.
Require or recommend?
They would like to require, whether or not they legally can, I guess is yet to be determined. So the concern always is when you require it, what's the enforcement? And then there's that mandate that all children have access to. It, it's a legal battle, so they're going to have to sort that out and figure it out, you know.
Just curious.
And we're going to have a, a complicated situation in the fall because of, you know, if there is a positive case, how do we do the contact tracing in the school and determine who's exposed and who's not? And how do we uphold HIPAA and privacy and still alert the public? And, and these are all just things that we haven't done before. But, but, but we will do. But we're, it's, you know, we talk all the time about we're, we're building this airplane while we're flying it, which is not model practice. That's not what you want to do.
Yeah. And I know they're concerned with substitute teachers.
All of the restrictions for substitute teachers have been lifted. So it used to be that you could only be a substitute teacher for 14 consecutive days. That has been dropped.
That's been.
Now a, a substitute teacher could teach the entire school year in one classroom.
You know, I thought some had already. I mean, I remember years when some teacher like, you know, had an illness and couldn't come back and then they had.
Or just your regular substitute teacher that just has a degree. You said, you do have to have a bachelor's degree. They, they lighten that restriction to an associate degree. You used to have to be 21, they loosened that to 20. If you have a, a trade in some education, teaching experience, you can be a substitute teacher.
Yeah.
So.
They really released that.
They have, they have released a lot of restrictions. Well, I think that they are trying to have a pool of resources.
Sure.
To back up the education component for the adults.
You know, the trainer school just recalled Diana. Said, what's, what are your restrictions as being a substitute teacher? She says, I, I can't wear a mask. She said, I cannot breathe and wear, they said, fine. That's a, that's something you'll sign off on, but they said, you will probably be teaching every day someplace in the system.
I thought she had a full fund, you know.
She can make more, you know, substitute. I don't know what to get out.
She can't get insurance, though, right?
Right. But she's got insurance anyway. But anyway, she said it's more or less up to the substitute, what they want, how they want to do it.
Then what school district is that?
Trainer mainly. Most of the while she goes to East Mills. Once, I think once she gets, she says, I think if I can, I want to stay with one school system as to go from one to another or something, you know. Now she said.
And that makes it hard when you jump from one section of school to. Can Diana teach at Lewis Central? I mean, can she go?
She could, but they've never called her.
Uh huh.
So.
That's kind of where we are. We, we still have, you know, I still have a quantity of PP we're maintaining. So in case we get requests now, we still have calls going out with our first responders. And they are based on if there's an alert on the home, they're dressing out. Glenwood is, they're dressing fully out. So somehow I will get tapped for replacements, which I have. I'm moving my stock, if you haven't noticed downstairs. I'm moving it to another storage site. It's air-conditioned right now, so I can manage out of there. It's small enough now, so we can, I can open up the basement courthouse a bit more. So I've been processing and trying to move some of that to the other location. So, so anyway, to help out here, to try and guide the custodians and stuff like that. One last thing before Cory comes up. Richard Supervisor Crouch is probably going to advise you this, but Friday we had a catastrophic issue with our radio system. It turns out, I found out Sunday, I didn't find out until Sunday because I was up all night, you're Saturday, Friday night, Saturday, and then Sunday, that it was a state system, not ours. The state had a casualty that in one of their cores that was feeding into us east of here somewhere. We were solid, but there was an area around Glenwood, part of I-29. And I don't know how far north that the signal strength was just low enough that affected because of topography. And they didn't bother to tell us that. Which I didn't hear about.
Why?
I have no idea. I have no idea. They didn't know it was affecting us far west. That's the issue. So it was even affecting up in Ames Boone County and, and what's the name, Wood, what's the name of Woodard? Where the other facility like Resource Center is, the comparative. It was in that area too, and it was affected, not know how much more. But finally, one of the Texas Motorola, because this is a Motorola problem, not electric in hearing problem. So then they finally, but I hope to have more detailed statement tomorrow. So we reverted back to VHF and we had some really interesting calls Saturday. I mean, there was serious calls, you know, shooting, knife, fight. You heard it. And, and so we were, we were, we, we had one deputy go back to 700, but he was in an area that we had coverage, so it worked. And actually, the system was up by then, but I hadn't tested it yet. I wasn't going to let people go back until I knew. So I was driving around the county to check. And, and so everybody else was on VHF along enforcement. So and the staff, I had two dispatches on duty and Sergeant England came back in and sent an email to Susan yesterday and said, they did an outstanding job of managing two different bandwidths. And when knowing that they had me over here with the shooting and we had VHF EMS coming in, mutual aid VHF coming in, because I didn't want them going back. We did, weren't fully fixed. The system wasn't reliable enough to promulgate. So we came back on about 3 o'clock Sunday. I let them release back to some of my hurts once I was out to drive around a little bit and make sure that I had good connectivity at DSAF. So it wasn't our system, which everybody was looking, everybody looks at you like, well, what did you do now? But no, it was a state issue. So we helped find out. I had a conference call.
So out of that catastrophe, did they realize maybe communication might be a little important to let you know?
Yeah. So that, that will be communicated to them. And really, we signed that MOU, memory understanding with ISI Sports over years ago, which we have responsibilities if they keep putting out these policies that we have to comply with. Well, they have responsibility to us since we signed that MOU as far as the, the network with their cores, with their state sites, everything else, if they're going to use part of our system. It's all one big system in state, people join. So it's a two-way street. And so, and this is a very complex project as it was. So anyway, I want to make sure you all knew that, that it wasn't on our system. It was something that happened in state. And hopefully they'll be forthcoming with that. So at least I'll have that recorded as a possible issue. But I guess I could say that's one time. Some counties get rid of their VHF entirely. You know, it's because they want to save money. That's one, since we hadn't accepted this system yet, we haven't. I still have VHF there. And my goal is to maintain, sustain the VHF as long as I can physically do that. Part of it, you know, like some fire law for redundancy, worst-case scenario. Well, we had a worst-case scenario. So it turned out to be beneficial that I could shift them over and we can still get to you, to operating. So I'm on.
Good.
Well, a little excitement up for the weekend, right?
Yeah. Thanks, Julie.
Mr. Grassley. Julie, I was going to say, ask Julie. We have, it's too early to relay anything if any cases come back to the fair. Is it too early for that yet? What, we got another week? What? Okay.
And we wouldn't disclose any identities.
Right, but I mean.
Fall into our numbers.
Right. Understand.
All right. Thank you.
I don't understand why they can't tell us, or won't tell us.
I tried. Got shot down.
Everybody tried.
Hopefully, only if you are part of what they know. I mean, if so-and-so says, yeah, I was with Lonnie Mayberry and Richard Crouch.
Yeah, but they do, they do some background, you know. Who are you with? Where'd you go? Be nice to know that.
So I do not have any visitors with me. I got a call from Ames Construction about an hour and a half ago. They have a new subcontractor on site and we just weren't able to leave the site this morning. They'd like to come in next week.
Did they come back with a counter or anything or they?
They didn't come back with a specific amount. I talked to them briefly on the phone, answered the email just a minute ago. Requested, rejected. Signed this agreement if you guys are good with it. If not, I'll, I'll give you time, put you in my agenda time. So they will come back next week. I kind of told them that 30 cents off isn't going to happen. And I think you guys told them that too. And so I think they are going to request a smaller amount.
So we're going to table this till next week?
Exactly. Now I'll make sure to put in my agenda item. No utility permits for this week. So my first action item is approval paid voucher number one to Western Engineering for project swap parent 111, L-55 HMA widening and resurfacing for the amount of $5,000. That is for mobilization.
$5,000 even?
$5,000 even. Yep.
And this is for the Silver City Road?
Correct.
Bigger.
Well, that, that, that orange paint's expensive.
Well, that was, that was our claim, actually. I went out there with some of our new technicians and helped mark out patching. So probably next week, maybe, maybe not until August, patching subcontractors going to come in. What was it about? 1,500 square yards of patching that's going to be done. The orange paint marked areas and, and they'll come in, do those removals and patch real quick. And then Western Engineering will be in at the end of August.
Is it a full, a full depth patch they're doing?
Yes. So the patching will be full depth.
Remove and replace.
Uh huh. Um, it's, it's the bad panels. If we're going to pay what we're top, we want to have a good base. So we'll fix those worst areas and then Western will be in, do the widening and resurfacing at the end of August or September.
HMA, so it's black top and not white top?
Yep.
Good.
Looking for approval for that? $5,000 mobilization. I'll make a motion to.
I'm sorry, mobilization?
Yes.
Pay Western Engineering $5,000 for moving.
Winding and resurfacing, I second it.
Good motion to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right below me. I always forget to say this beforehand, but it's, it's a swap project. And so it's STBG funds. There's just a small amount that will be matched with our FM funds.
Need two of these for you?
Uh, no, just the top one. I just need to sign the top one.
They'll be all right.
My other action item is approval to advertise for two positions. We had one retirement last week, no, two, on July 10th. So just over a week and a half ago, Ron Williams retired. And his position was bid on by the employees. And we had one person apply for it, Copperstone, who's going to be taking over Ron Williams' equipment operator position. He's, Copperstone's been in with the bridge crew for the last 16 months or so since he was hired. He's had some experience with equipment operating and he's been able to get a little bit more experience on the job. So he's in a temporary or probationary period in that new position. I think it's going to work out. So we need to then fill Copperstone's position, which is truck driver one. We don't start at truck.
So when it, on our, on our, no, no, you're fine. But on our thing, it says labor, truck driver and truck driver two positions. Are they two positions and not a truck driver two or is there?
Two positions.
Okay.
First position, the labor truck driver, which is Copperstone's old position. His actual old position is truck driver one, but we don't start at truck driver one, we start at labor truck driver. But truck driver two is Robert Gaylord's position, and that's a tractor, tractor truck semi. And, and we would like to find somebody with that, that has.
He's retired too?
Yes. And he's going to retire. His last date is August. August 14th or 21st. You know, I can't, I can't recall. It's in August, but we figure we do both. And, and we won't hire somebody for the truck driver two position until Bob has left. But it's, it's pretty easy. We start the, start the starting date after he's, he's left, so.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve those?
Absolutely. I'll make a motion to start advertising them.
And this will be on the county website?
Yes. And then we'll also advertise in the Opinion Tribune and the Leader. Might look at also through the Service Bureau, they have an advertisement app. We usually have pretty good numbers for, for truck driver positions, so. Applications, yeah.
Good.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going back to general discussion, Cory, let's, let's talk some numbers quick. You're going to move 3 million yards of dirt, correct? Ish?
Eight million.
Eight million yards of dirt?
Oh, eight million.
That's a little, 3 million over three years.
Are you sure?
I think it's 3 million.
No.
I always thought we were dealing with 3 and a half million.
Yeah, I can check my emails real quick.
I thought we were looking at about 1.7, 1.8.
Total?
Uh, on our fees.
I thought we was up to about 2.8 million.
I'm pretty sure it's 8 million yards of.
200 minutes from last week, wouldn't it? Was that, do we abbreviate them?
Uh, it wasn't last week, was it? It would have been the week.
The week before, correct.
Maybe the week before. Oh, never mind, go back up to Congress. Apartments. I would say, I wasn't here that week, but I'm measuring it. It was maybe June thirtieth.
Give her total yardage.
But it might when they were in here that week.
Cause we didn't, we didn't approve it until the following week.
We didn't approve anything.
Yeah, nothing's unapproved. The minutes were approved.
Yeah, minutes, but not, doesn't say.
It just says thirty-five surcharge. It didn't have a total. I've got it written down on my old notes. I just don't have it in front of me. It would be nice to know.
We could ask, I, I could shoot a text to Tyler too.
Somebody needs, somebody, somebody needs no calculus, cause they could take a hundred and sixty acres, forty feet deep.
So that's what we were just talking about last week was just the surcharge if we were going to decrease it.
Not last week.
Why can't I pull up? Holly or Darren should have it. It's gone through their, I mean, the surcharge goes through their office.
They were here. Your request would've went to two hundred and fifty thousand versus one point seven five million.
Hello there. Hey, can you tell me what the amount of dirt that Ames Construction is planning on moving? Um, over the floor.
Five million.
Okay. She's getting it.
I had three million stuck in my head. My, my math is five million.
For, for eight million dollars of, of yards?
No, that was for five million yards.
Oh, five million.
Yeah. Now, that's the calculations I came up with for the fees. I didn't, I didn't have the.
Well, I thought right away, when we were going, the thirty-five cents it was gonna be.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's five million. One point seven five million was our, was what I came up with.
Huh?
Maybe it was eight tons. And that would be closer to five million yards.
I'm showing two hundred and fifty thousand versus one point seven five for the request they had. Thirty-five cents a yard is one point seven five. Five cents a yard, I got two fifty.
Yeah, I'll have my notes from two weeks ago. But eight mil, eight million ton would be five point three nine yards. So, maybe, maybe that's why I'm getting eight, maybe some tons.
Yeah, cause, cause we talked about the, the quarter of a million wouldn't pay, wouldn't pay for anything. You know, in a sense. It would be a drop in the bucket compared to what, you know?
We're gonna have some cost on it, so it's.
We just kinda knew, oh, we know that. We know that. But that's, it's just the other part. That's okay. We're just, I think Lonnie May thinks he may have found it, but we're just trying to do some figuring. Oh, okay, okay. Well, we were just trying to figure it out in the boardroom.
That's one big lake.
It, it, it is. That's okay. If she didn't have it, we can, we can roll with five.
Ever come right out and ask you, Corey? What, what are they thinking about?
Five cents?
Well, they are thinking about five cents.
They asked us, yeah.
So it's gonna be a thirty cents decrease, but.
Yeah, and that, and that would generate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years for Corey.
Thank you. Five point five million.
Five million.
Yards.
Cubic yards.
Yeah, and I just use five million.
I must've, I must've been looking at tons, ain't mine.
So, so at the maximum charge, at thirty-five cents a yard, it'd be one point seven five million over three years. Cause that's when they're planning on moving. This is over a three-year period. So. At twenty cents a yard, that's a million dollars. Over three years.
Yeah, but it's gonna run for five.
Three to five.
Three to five years.
Okay, I thought he said three-year span regardless. Yeah.
Three years. Oh, I thought three to five years.
They're talking two to three.
They're talking two to three.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
So at thirty cents a yard, that's a million and a half. So.
How about two cents?
They're asking for five. We're not gonna give them more than what they want.
You're saying thirty-three cents?
I'm saying thirty-three cents.
Oh, two cents off.
Two cents off.
Well, though. I just wanted some numbers to mess with.
Before we jump the big dog.
I'm stuck on nothing.
Yeah, I'm not making a deci- decision here by any means. I just wanna compare and, and let you guys know what we're looking at over a three-year span. It's, I wasn't trying to get into the nuts and bolts of it, but.
Yeah, that'd be a half million dollars a year for thirty cents.
One, one point seven five. We're all, we're at one point seven five million to two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a three-year span. There's, that's our gap. We're at the max, they're at the minimum. They wanna meet somewhere between, so something to think about over a few days. And it's all going to you, so.
Yep, and I know I'm kinda campaigning against myself when I say it's, I'm okay with dropping it a little bit. Cause if it does encourage other dirt haulers to use a conveyor system, it's gonna save our roads, um.
Personally, I'm not in favor of five cents a yard.
I'm not either.
Surcharge.
Well, what, what good, why are we doing anything?
Five cents off, maybe, but.
Yeah, but at five cents, what, what good is it doing us at all?
Quarter million dollars.
That's it.
It'd be one point seven five versus one point five for him. Over three years.
One point seven versus what did you say?
Two hundred and fifty. Minimum, maximum. They asked for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're stuck at one point seven five right now. We're at the max, they're at the minimum. They wanna fall somewhere between. We'll see where we're at. But it's something to think about for all of us. It's money and we're tired, I'm tired of being the little man on the total pole. When it comes to funding in Vermels County, it's, we get beat up a lot and be nice to win one.
I understand that, yeah. Uh, speaking of funding, uh, Richard gave me a call yesterday and, and requested a letter to send to Senator Ernst's office. So I drafted something real quick. I'll draft.
Can I, can I copy this?
Yes, yes, you can copy that.
I wanna send one to Senator Grassley too.
Okay, um, wanted to have you guys take a look at it before we do send it off if you see any typos or if you think I should add or remove anything, um. Tried to be as condensed as I could about what, what we're dealing with.
I think you should also put in how many times you've had to do, redo.
You did. It says, I'm currently in my third attempt in the last sixteen months.
Well, I mean, I, here's, here's a copy of the letter that I did send in my second attempt. Uh, it's fifteen pages long, cause I had a bunch of attachments. Uh, I mean, there's, there's a lot more that went into it than just three attempts, but.
And maybe that would be also a good thing to have forwarded on, don't you think? Your second attempt, what all he added into it?
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah, yeah. I, I can.
Out several times and remeasure.
Yeah, as long as you can get this set, Phil, I don't care.
I've, I've got Donna's, um, email. She sent it to me the other day and asked for copies of the information. And, uh, I don't, I mean, I, you can give me Tony's and I can forward it to her too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a, I'll put, uh, one for Senator Grassley too.
If we need to rattle cages, I mean, it.
Absolutely, that's good.
Where I'm at right now on the third attempt, uh, I'm working closely with Iowa Homeland Security this time, uh, on, uh, Guinness Project Obligated. We, uh, multiple phone conversations with, uh, Michelle Terry and submitted it, the project. I had a phone conversation Friday afternoon with, um, a couple FEMA representatives, my PDMG plus her manager, I believe. And they were gonna talk to the CRC, who is the one that approves projects or obligates them. And they had some questions, which, um, I, I need to, I need to respond to, um. They sound encouraged. I don't know. We'll, we'll see how it goes, but I, I don't think this would hurt to, to, uh.
No, I'll bet.
Get some more involvement, um.
Keep looking fair.
Exactly, and still waiting. I, I should be getting, um, a response back from Iowa Homeland Security for our appeal for the Yankee Bridge, uh, FEMA project as well, uh, this week. Talking with Michelle Friday, it sounded like, uh, their reviewer had, had been able to go through it and, um, so then we'll get that submitted. So that's two of the last three FEMA projects that we have still, still open and not obligated. Should we, should we hopefully get those obligated in the next month or two? Um, also Carol, well, I, I got, uh, messages from PJ. Carol talked to Pacific Junction yesterday and they're gonna be writing a check for the debris removal services at.
It's out of our local funds.
Founded. It did come out of our local fund. It came out of our local funds.
The figure on that one?
Uh, their amount was one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and change. The total debris removal construction or, uh, debris removal assistance contract that we had with Self Construction was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Uh, we paid for the full amount and then PJ's paying us back for the amount spent in the city limits.
Of a hundred and sixty thousand.
That was their amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Good.
Um, it's really all I had for general discussion.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Well, no, we, we, we gotta discuss the tree in Miniola.
Okay.
Tree, a tree?
I told her she needs to prove that it's our tree first. She called me for a survey a while ago. The lady called me for a survey.
Six oh two Elm, on Elm, yep.
Well, there's two of them up there really.
Uh.
If you get to looking, I mean, they're.
I haven't looked personally.
Yeah, I haven't gone out either. It's, uh, there's a tree along this right-of-way line in Miniola that's big, dying, it's.
Apparently dead or dying.
Yeah, yeah. And she wants us to cut it down, cause if it falls on the road, then it's our problem. But when it falls on the road, it will be our problem. It hasn't yet.
And that's.
If it falls on her house, then it's her problem. No one knows where the tree is now because she doesn't wanna pay for a survey, so she's calling us and now I guess him to say, we need to cut our tree down. We don't know that it's our tree. If it falls on our road, then it's our tree.
I don't recall planting that tree, do you?
No, but it's, it's a it could be our problem, it could be her problem, but right now, it's not a problem.
Right now, it's neutral, far as I'm concerned.
Right, that's what I told her.
Richard's plenty busy right now and, uh, he'll tell you himself that he's not.
She doesn't wanna pay for a survey.
He doesn't have the time to go out there and, and he has to, has to find a, uh, uh.
And if it is our tree and if it falls on her house, then we have insurance.
Yeah, I, I kinda left it at that, but if, if you do determine who's.
It's a massive tree. It's, it's.
I was gonna say, does anybody know, is it like a big walnut tree or a maple?
It's a big, uh, linn. Is that right? It's a linn tree, a linden or whatever they call them. Yeah, it looks like it's about to sprout around. And it's quite tall. It goes up over the top of the house.
Get a bird's eye view of that on Google.
Uh, you can, yep, um, get on Google Street.
Take our wonderful tree chopper and.
Wouldn't we? We don't do tree removals that are over twenty, thirty feet, but uh, in the past, we've, we've hired out Converse to, to do tree removals that are
Way too big for our bridges.
Mature bridges, or mature trees.
Converse is much better at it.
Yeah, there's just some things we don't need to do.
I'm not saying our guys wouldn't be, uh, excited to, uh, grab the little yellow man. Drag him.
Oh, I recognize that place.
If you go back out, you can get the helm.
Where the hell am I at here?
All right, you gotta go back north.
Quick one, quick back to street.
Oh, there we go.
Zoom in a little closer. There, now you can drag him, drop him. I can't remember which side, uh, Seventh Street, but it's on.
Right there at the corner of, of Sixth and Elm, right on the north.
So put the, well, green, put the green thing right at home.
It's right in the corner on the north. The driveway goes right up along the west side of it.
Okay, so it's on the left side.
No, one back up this way.
I would think that tree on the right's a problem.
No, it's back this way. Come back.
I'm not a Google, I'm not a Google map.
Back to the west. Okay, that's, that's one of the big trees.
One of these two.
But that one there sets, sets back on it. The, the other one you can barely see, Corey.
This side.
There you go.
Just a little closer, a little closer, a little closer.
You're wrong with that, or you just?
Uh, so you can see on the street.
Yeah.
The little X.
Okay.
And that, that's where you'll go to.
They both said about the same.
That's, that's not on a county.
Well, if you measures it.
It could be in the county right away.
We have sixty foot right away in the.
Even there?
In the roadway, so.
Yeah, most of the old streets are sixty.
Oh, really?
Well, it's gonna be close.
It is very close.
You could split it properly.
I had a guy hand measure it. I had to go hand measure it and it was, part of the tree was on her property.
If, if the servicing is centered.
Yeah. If. But.
Are both of them dead?
No, that's just, this is just in the fall of the year.
But if we were to go out, we'd also take the rest of the brush and bushes too. And to remove stuff, with all of it.
She needs a survey, she needs a tree trimmer. It's not a problem until it's a problem.
So Lonnie, what would that cost for Converse to come and?
Ooh, I, I, I don't bid trees, no idea. Ooh, I don't bid trees, no idea. My guess would be around five grand, but I have no idea. That's it.
I think it'd be a little under that, but...
Shooting from the hip, yeah. Survey's gonna run her about a thousand bucks.
What would help if we hauled the big stuff off? You know, he could load it in our trucks, haul it to the dump, landfill.
I think they might give us a discount, maybe.
I mean, as I'm looking, if that tree did fall over, it would get into that other person's...
Well, there's a power line that goes right...
Or property?
There's a power line, see that ball? The power line goes right back underneath it.
That's what I told him.
Yeah.
If it did land in the roadway...
If I'm his neighbor, and his tree falls onto my yard, it's my problem.
Even though it's his tree?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
That's not right.
I don't care. It's the, it's the way the laws are written, and it's way above my pay grade.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know about treagle, or tree legal.
Treagle, I love treagle. Treagle's dead.
I've done many surveys for...
Just cut the wrong one off and see what happens. We've been through that with Kevin several times. They'd go out and cut trees, they'd go up on the bank, "Yeah, we can cut this." Well... People should look to see where the fence supposed to sit.
So your tree makes a hole in my roof, and I would have to pay for it?
Yes.
You put your house in the road, we didn't.
Yes. You had the right to trim my tree while it was growing, to keep it from falling on your house the past thirty years while it was growing.
You can cut it right down the fence line.
Yes, yes. I can trim your tree, whatever's hanging over on me.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that with Mr. Clark out here. I've got my bush hog trimmer that I can tip up, and I'm just gonna drive right straight down the line and cut his cedar trees and whatever else is in the road, and they're not gonna look pretty when I get done. I didn't plant them on line, he did.
Heck, I got a neighbor at Glumbrook that has a crappy-looking row of evergreens, 'cause I could tell that their neighbor trimmed off what was on their property.
And they put them on the line. Well, when you put them on the line, the base of that tree is on... Even if they put it an inch onto their, onto my property, that tree grows like this. So yes, I planted that tree on my side, but it's affecting your property. You can trim it.
So then you've got the right to do, trim it.
Otherwise, I'm damaging your property. You can't use your property.
You can cut right up to the line.
Yep, so that's our Mineola tree.
Yep.
Okay. The village tree.
She didn't like what I had to say to her. She must've called you, Richard. She called me as a surveyor, too.
She just emailed me.
You see?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we, if we were to do something like that, I think it might be worth our time to mark a bunch of trees.
Clean them all out. If you're gonna do the right-of-way, you might as well stake her all on Elm, and while you got the trucks there, just spend a week and... Clean it out, and then they'll all be mad at us.
Yeah, that's...
It'll move on.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope, nothing for me. Uh, the tube out here, we just cleaned it, uh, here at two hundred and fiftieth Ingram. They went in the other day. We put a new driveway tube in some time ago. Right there, and now it's, we turned it down to Apple Orchard Road.
Okay.
They just, they just cleaned it the other day. Well, that three-inch rain we had, the tube, I think, is pretty well covered, up with mud. And we could actually, I think, dig the mud out and not plug the tube, so...
Do you remember about a month ago...
Yeah, we did some ditch work there, too.
I got six inches of... A guy that you couldn't find his name out of my neck of the woods. He just filled up that ditch, so he made his own driveway. And you guys dug it out? Now he's driving in the middle of the field, so is he not gonna pay for it, too? Do you know who that was?
So, uh, I, I know we got the name, but I'd have to look.
But there's something funny back there in them, though.
That's Nagel, right?
Yes. And I, Larry Storm, that owns that, yeah. It was just kinda interesting. Apparently, he thought, "Well, I'm not gonna pay for it, too. There's another way I can get in."
Well, you'll, you'll see that a lot come harvest time. A lot of tire tracks that don't go on driveways and just leave the road through the ditch, but...
That's right. Oh, Cory.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys. Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the twenty-eight E agreement with Pacific Junction. And this would be for law enforcement, correct?
It's a total of two thousand and twenty-eight dollars, or twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents per capita for their cost.
Is that what it has been?
It's less. I'm assuming that one of the reasons that it took longer is they recalculated the population that they have...
Good.
Okay, will I make a motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Pacific Junction for twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents per capita?
Two thousand and twenty-eight dollars.
Two thousand and twenty-eight dollars, or twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents per capita.
Oh, okay. Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the twenty-eight E agreement for law enforcement with the City of Pacific Junction for the fee of two thousand and twenty-eight dollars. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll be rich off of that one.
Yeah, that's a group of handwritings that we have to do for the mortgage assistance, because they didn't get them to us until Friday night at five. So we missed the accounts payable. Well, they're all for August first, so we have to do a handwrit.
How are you?
All right, the next item on the agenda is to authorize the chair to sign the cost advisory contract.
Well, that's not a no-brainer. I make a motion for the chair to sign the cost advisory contract. Put some more John Henrys on.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
How are you, Tyler? Hello.
Didn't wake you from your nap, did we?
I wish. Oh, we wait. Uh, I just talked to Michael Bruce.
Michael who?
Mike Bruce, he's participated, well, maybe participating in the buyouts. He's one of them that...
Wanted demolition.
Yeah, he got a secondary appraisal for his property. So we're waiting on the committee to let us know what their recommendation is.
What were they? Apples, 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 oranges?
His first one from NRH, I wanna say, was like a hundred and fifty, and his new one was like two hundred and twenty or two thirty, something like that. I'm inclined to believe the higher amount, but we'll see what the committee comes back with. He has an independent offer from someone else to buy his property. So he's considering possibly not even going through with buyout. However, Jeff Reef, who you talked to last week, I think, his house and garage are on that same piece of property. So if Mike Bruce does not go through with the buyout, then Jeff is not able to either, because property on which the house sits has to be bought out and deed restricted. So I don't know. I told Mike just to wait and see what the appraisal comes back.
Yeah, they've got him, so...
But, uh...
Is that our problem?
I don't know. I mean, if, if it's a difference of... Can we earmark fifty grand out of the two hundred and fifty grand to buy off Jeff? Just keep that property on the tax roll, is it that, or is it smaller?
Well, it wouldn't keep his property on.
No, because then Mike would sell to the...
Oh, I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm following you.
But then it wouldn't, his property wouldn't have to go through the buyout. Jeff wouldn't be screwed over, and we'd keep it on.
I'm sorry, so Mike?
Mike has an offer to buy the property, from somebody else.
See, according to Jeff last week...
If he sells to this person, Jeff is probably...
He was, he was okay, but now it's just somebody's come in and offered more money.
Well, his dad is for in-law.
That's what I told him also. The other option, the other option, what I told Mike was that he could do that cheaper than to...
Right, but, well, he can. But is, is it our problem?
Not necessarily our problem.
Right.
I told, I told Mike also to...
Trying to take care of Jeff, yes, yeah. We'll do what we can.
In the, in the third-party sale, too.
Right.
I don't even know if we can.
Does the ground underneath is still mine?
Right.
So you're just saying...
To buy out the house. I'm not saying that's a good idea.
What would it take for us, yeah?
Right.
Well, you...
Just, just the county being the good person trying to make everything...
And a long way around it, that money was supposed to be meant for economic development and tax growth, whatever.
Keeping the property on the tax...
We could, we could argue that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I came up with, possibly using that.
We could. How many are gonna come out of the woodwork if we do that?
That's what I'm worried about, yeah. But, 'cause, what did you say? There's one other that's similar?
Yeah, but it's going, the whole thing's going.
Okay, that's good. Yeah.
What'd you do, Richard? Forget your last name?
Yeah.
I'll put it on that for you. It's Crouch, C-R-O-U-C-A.
Could be couch. Depends on what I say some days.
I made a mistake stopping at BP yesterday morning. Oh, God.
It's always fun to go to a mess.
They got into the short business down there.
Did they?
Yep. I said, "You know what? I said, 'I can have knee-high corn before anybody else.'" Just think about that.
You think?
I've seen it.
So can have it.
Yep. Mark was supposed to have one of his inspections yesterday at three o'clock. See if they could open. So they are closed.
How many did we get?
Uh, one, two, three.
I'll tell you what, there's some truck drivers that be so happy when that opens up.
Well, I thought it was seven, but we only have five here.
Well, there's only five that actually...
Oh, they score. Any of the top five would be able to do the job, is pretty much the same time.
We got seven separate bids from seven companies for the asbestos inspections.
Oh.
Is that the rest of them?
Asbestos guru? That's a spreadsheet, and kind of in the order of what...
And it's, that's how SWPC scored them, based off of how the RFP was put out. So the top is who has the highest score, and then on down for the top five there. Those are the ones that they feel would be able to actually do the project within the quick turnaround that we want. And then there were two others that...
This is just the inspection. They'll go in each, each, each one of the houses that we're buying out, and they'll say, "Yes, there's asbestos in it. There's this much asbestos in it," or estimated, or whatever.
Right. And then they'll also work with the demolition or mitigation company during, to make sure that they're getting all of it out, and then do a final inspection also. That's all included.
Are we going to...
It'll be pretty easy to get it all out.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Tracal will do that quickly.
Lightning strike. Uh, what was your question?
Just the older houses, like we said last week?
No, we're gonna do all of them.
They have to do them all?
Yeah.
Yep, they have to. That's a...
That doesn't make sense on these new ones.
Agreed. But who knows? I mean, maybe I reclaimed some piece of furniture from the seventies that I left Google and brought it in my house with asbestos. Maybe that happened, so... Is ATC the first one, is that?
Yeah.
I, that, having reviewed all the bids, I was, that was gonna be my choice regardless of...
Where they come out of.
I think they're relatively local, aren't they?
They're relatively local, yes.
And I've heard, I've talked to several different...
I didn't think they were in that type of...
Des Moines, Waterloo, Omaha.
I talked to several different...
Yeah, Terracotta could do about anything.
...that have used them, and they said, "Yeah, by far, that's one of the better choices you could make."
Really?
And then, plus their bid was the one that I swiped, so... That would be SWPC and my recommendation.
For ATC?
Who to choose. And I mean, I think their offer is one of the least expensive ones.
Can we put that on next week's agenda? Can we put that on next week's agenda to prove it, or not?
We've got it here.
It's on, right now, to select the bid, and then, yeah, we'll get the contract worked out within the next week, because we want, that's kind of the thing that's holding up the demolition and the mitigation RFPs is getting...
Is this?
But that's, that's why those, the ATC scored so high, is because they basically said, "Within two weeks, we could have all of them done."
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve, is it just called ATC?
Yes, sir.
So they got three locations, Des Moines, Waterloo, and Omaha is where they're in?
And they do quite a bit of work around here.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I second it. It's good.
We've got a motion and a second to approve ATC as the asbestos contractor inspection, right?
Yeah.
Inspector?
That doesn't remove it. Just tell it just...
There is some or not.
Yes, there is, no, there's not. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. Onward.
And then you're going to do the contract, or...
Yeah. Did you talk about, kind of where we're at with the process, otherwise?
Yeah, I, yeah, no. I, I was wondering, that was my question, too, was like, how many, how do we still have out?
So, we're probably two-thirds of the way through. I got two more that I need to open this morning. Offers back from people, and that should put us around mid-forties of how many we've got there, like forty-five, forty-six.
For buyouts, for, we wanna move forward.
And we've got like three that we have not got the opt-out signature page from them.
We think we're gonna be getting, yeah.
Yeah, but they've said that...
What, five or six then that have opted out?
Well, that's three, that's seven, eight, I think.
Yeah.
That opt out. They're not gonna do it, they're not gonna do it.
And then we've got, what we'd say, three that are currently with the, the tax committee to determine which appraisal.
Three with them? Okay.
The three, well, Jeffson, Reese Simpson, and Zomer.
Who's Zomer?
Paula, which is the same as...
Oh, yeah, give, 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 give.
Isn't that, isn't that right there with Reeves?
Yeah, Reeves Simpson.
Yeah, they're right next to each other.
So she's not deciding?
Right now, we're figuring, I'm talking with the...
No, they're, they're in the...
I'm talking with the closing services and SWPC and Terry to kind of conceptualize how... Because when you close, obviously, you have to have all the money in escrow to be able to pay everything. So we're trying to figure out what's gonna be the most sound process for doing that, because obviously, the county doesn't wanna push a whole bunch of money into escrow and then wait for reimbursement, or to be FEMA and state and CDVG funds to put into escrow.
So make us pay for it first.
They may.
We'll have to go borrow it.
Yeah.
So, just so we know that, but I'm kind of trying to reassure, uh, Mark at clear title that yes, one way or the other, we'll, we'll make it work.
I had a, I was emailing Alexis yesterday about some other stuff, back and forth, because we had another one that's, um, talking, or we have one that's thinking about paying off his mortgage and wanted to know if that was an issue. We don't, you know, we said, "No, it shouldn't be," but we visited with them, you know, just to be sure that that was fine. And then discussion was, "We need to have another conference discussion with Terry and everybody as to, okay, so when we get to closing, you know, who's responsible for this? Where, you know, what pot of money is this coming out of?"
Right, and that's, that's what I was trying to kind of ferret out, so we know... Right, and that's, that's what I was trying to kind of ferret out. So we know, because SWPC knows basically the lead times of when we request money from FEMA, it takes two weeks to get.
Or two years.
When we request it from state, it gets-
No, that money's coming because it's from, it's sitting there. It's, we get that with the flood recovery money and stuff, it comes momentarily. They submit the bill.
Well, yeah, knowing that we've got three or four different pots from which a single closing,
will get settlement amount is coming from, that's gonna be- So I have to keep each pot straight so that I don't put it, take it out of the wrong one?
Um, and then yesterday they did send the first, I think, twenty abstract orders to-
Well, they were looking at, well, see, and that was my question. Okay, so we have people that are ready to close because we have abstracts. And that's the other thing. I've got several with abstracts that are wanting to know when they need to get the abstracts to us. And I said, we'll let them know.
I cannot in good faith start closings until we have a demolition and a mitigation.
Without a doubt.
Mitigation contractor.
Without a doubt.
Because that's not fair to the contractor to say, hey, you know, we drag our feet here, so you only have one day.
You've only got ten more days left, right. Exactly.
Just to, it's, it's a hassle trying to get everything on the same route, but we're, we're close to that. Probably two or three weeks out to where we can start doing closings or somewhere in there.
It's an issue since you have to settle that.
All right, that's all I have.
Are you here all day today?
Yeah.
Okay, I may come down and visit with you later about-
Are you swamped right now?
Am I swamped right now?
Can you stay for a few minutes till we're done with these guys?
No, that's fine.
We'll just visit with you when we're done. All right, gear up. Golden Hills RC and D.
Here we go.
Mappa, JEO.
Well, I think we have the-
Landowner agreement.
Yeah, landowner agreement for IWA bank stabilization.
This is for Rhonda Klein. There's the check for her. This is the second half of the Klein Evans project, which leads to the next item on the agenda. So she has the lower portion of the bend. She is, they are doing a bank stabilization project.
Perfect.
So we do just need signatures from you guys on those contracts.
What's the contract amount?
Her portion is-
Her portion is nine thousand three twenty-eight oh one.
Right. Do you have total?
Um, our total estimated project cost?
I guess we don't, we're not paying it, so we're, okay, okay.
This is our limit. We gotta keep this, right?
It comes in, yep, it, the way this works is there's a ten percent cost share from the landowner. So the total amount of the project, ninety percent is paid by the county and ten percent is paid by the landowner. So the check that you receive for each of these projects is that ten percent to pay for the project itself from the landowner. And part of the discussion with Tyler is, some of these landowners are going to apply or are in the process of applying for SWCD funds, a loan through the SWCD. Um, it's a very low interest loan. Uh, it is a guaranteed loan through the state of Iowa. The issue with this loan is, it is not paid until the project is completed. So SWPC, Alexis, and Grant are working with us.
They're coming too. Well, Grant is.
Grant was gonna be here, I believe.
Why don't we just wait?
Yeah, because it's like ten o'clock, so he might have.
Um, yeah, let's wait on that, but we're going to request that maybe we would draw up some documents to allow them to pay that portion on the backside if they have the guaranteed loan. So Grant can explain it a little better, maybe.
Well, yeah, we'll need, we'll need some type of agreement drawn up for that because it's, it's a cash flow issue is what it is for them. They don't have that ten percent necessarily. So-
I guess it would be ten percent of the total cost, right?
Yeah, SWCD loan.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they're able to secure the finance.
And that's what we want, that's what we want to require is that-
Can we just add that to the landowner agreement?
Yes, yes.
Clause on there.
Yep, that can, but we want to make sure that it's the way you guys want it.
Yeah, will you just send me whichever ones are, you know, that and I'll add, I'll throw some language in there.
And that's the thing, to be clear, it's not the ones that we're currently, um, talking about, the bank stabilization projects. It's future, it's some of the future projects.
Yeah, I think you'd be able to find even more people now.
Oh, we don't need any more.
Oh, we're good, okay.
Well, and, and we-
If we find more funding, we would.
Yeah, well, and we, I mean, in a way, we'd prefer them not to use that loan because it adds a month to, a month or more to our process.
They would prefer, he doesn't, they don't use that.
I guess we would. Well, it's great for them.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really, really good partnership with Swol Water Conservation District within our counties. And I feel that is the biggest benefit to this portion of it is that we are allowing the Swol Water Conservation District or having them become involved. So it's a really good partnership with Swol Water Conservation District because this is typically their bread and butter.
Right.
Um, just like they are going to be able to, Swol Water Conservation Districts within both Mills and Fremont are going to be able to take our as-built, claim those projects in these years as them assisting. And their funding is based on all of the projects that they do in a year.
Oh, so when they update us that, you know, they brought X, did X amount of projects in Mills County, that's where that comes from.
Exactly. So we're, we're working to partner the best we can and, and to kind of give them, you know, some kudos and credit too. So it's been, it's been a really good partnership between the IWA program, which I know one hundred percent, I know
I got my legs, no.
Other branches do not have a relationship with me. So I think, so it does, it does throw a real muncher into it because it does add a month through the process, um, because-
Before they get the funding.
Before they're approved.
Just to further the financing.
Oh, just to approve?
It takes a month.
Yeah.
Financing approval.
Therefore, our bidding is-
He's not gonna get water.
Independent on that.
He would have to water.
I shouldn't say it. It's mostly, that's, that's a drawback to the process, a delay.
That is the drawback to it.
So, and we have, how many are looking to do that? About five landowners are looking to use?
Whitehill, Welchins. Laman. Smith. Rasmussen.
Right, yep.
So the way it works-
That's a lot in Fremont County though.
Yeah, yep.
Most of them.
Smith is up here, yeah.
What's Smith?
Brady and Brady.
Oh. For terracing or?
Ponds.
They're gonna do a pond?
Two.
Oh.
They're doing quite a few projects, actually.
Well, and then there's the, yeah, there's the landlord tenant on the Caton property, which they're doing a bunch of projects on that.
But as of right now, I don't think Caton, she's not, she's going to watch.
refill them, wash them?
Where'd you go? Where'd you tease that at?
But the process is-
The restroom.
The process is, it has to go to the SWCD, the SWCD has to approve it. It goes to the Iowa Finance Authority, Iowa Finance Authority, we tease it, it comes back and is approved. So-
If you pull that red tape aside, it looks just fine.
More like a watershed.
Make these birds.
Why don't you just go ahead and turn the supply off?
Did they not?
I think what building I was in the other day and they had taken trash cans and taped them to the wall.
But we have to be able to allow them to pay.
Well, unsanitary, I mean.
Basically, that's what it is. If they lock in funds upfront and then the funds are released, once the project is-
Because you're having, you're not having to pay the contractor in full intelligence.
No, it doesn't. But it is up to the county, but it's a big one to do it.
We got a lot of projects, Jake. They're busy.
We are. We're trying to wrap up all those last details on all the projects. Get to that final cost estimate number that the landowner cost share is based on, so there's, it's, it's a rush at the end. We're at ninety percent on most of the designs, but that last ten percent, you know, we're trying to cross all the Ts, not all the Is because, especially in this case, when landowners' dollars are involved and it's based on our final cost estimate. We want to be darn sure that our final estimate is, is what we feel it should be, so.
Well, and like Jake was saying, the one drawback that does make it more difficult for JEO is that with most of these, once they're done, once JEO hands me those designs and that cost, I go to the landowner, have a meeting with them, they go over it, if they have any questions, Jake's with us, they write that check.
They write the check.
Now, he has to get us those designs and the preliminary costs. They come to me, they go to Swol Water Conservation District, then they have to go through that month process. Where originally it only takes like, it's been taking, what, a week to get the check or two weeks at the most?
Yeah.
When you're done?
Yeah, I mean, some of these landowners that have been knowing they were gonna write a check for a certain amount, it hasn't changed much since we originally told them. They're ready to write that check.
So you haven't even broke ground at any place.
No, but that's what our, that's the next agenda item is related to. We are ready to begin bid advertisement on the, the two largest projects out of the whole list. And those are the bank stabilization projects.
The ma-
Bank stabilization.
Oh, banks.
Yep.
It's a lot of what John Thomas does in Henry Mountains where-
There's a chair over here, Bill.
Unless you went away from me. I'm gonna stand pretty much nicely. We're just talking about, um, where you take the riprap along the edge of a bank, you have the, uh, weers that come out, it pushes the water away from the bank to help keep from cutting. We can show you, um, on there, one of them that is, the, the project that you signed today, Klein's, what it's actually doing. This is going to be big, um, soil retention and keep from the erosion.
Anybody doing the one on, over here on thirty-four? I really thought somebody would jump on that. I mean, for the cost.
I mean, yeah. What do it cost?
Jeez.
This project's huge, you know, one, Caton Klein.
Well, Louis, when I talked to Louis last, he says, anywhere from six and a half to seven rows a year. It just keeps.
Eating that much?
Yeah.
That's probably similar to the Evans Klein.
Worse over by Red Oak. I've, I've, I've done surveys over in Red Oak where there's six, eight-foot tall corn and it's hanging off the bank. You know they didn't plant it that way.
Oh, we have, all funds are obligated and we have two projects that are in the wings should something not happen. But all funds are completely obligated at this time.
So let's say you get these projects done, Carol, is there any hoping that maybe some more funding would come through that they realize this is a need?
Not at this percentage.
Not really?
No, not, not at this percentage. I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and before COVID, I would, would have a little bit of hope, maybe. Um, because flooding was still at the top of, of the state of Iowa's mind and people's mind after the nineteen floods. But with this pandemic, even Homeland Security, all of them have completely switched gears in, in my opinion. So I just don't see-
I've even seen, I've even seen FEMA switching, changing their attitude since, since the COVID stuff started.
They don't want to pay, um, even for projects that are going on.
They don't have it. There's no, there's no, there's no, nothing's generating any money right now.
Yeah, and FEMA is trying to find loopholes, I think, for drainage districts and other areas.
Really?
I'll see that one. I'll believe that when I see it. Don't hold your breath. All right, now that everybody's here, uh, we have the landowner agreement for the IWA bank stabilization. Is that Mr. Klein here? Miss Smith Klein, sorry. You guys have anything to add to what we've said or?
Well, I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion to move forward.
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the landowner agreement for the IWA bank stabilization. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I was hoping you weren't gonna be opposed to it, Richard.
Yeah. Not yet.
Twenty-first?
Yes.
And just like the ones before, um, if you guys could scan those, I know Grant probably needs a copy and then we would need a copy also just for our records of those documents. But you guys keep the originals because you are the contract holder.
Thank you. May I just go make a copy of it right now and give them to you guys? Do this one. Copy it. What do you want? You want the same way or what do you?
I don't necessarily need one.
Did you get your papers the other day?
You don't need it, okay.
Oh, yes, I did. Yep, thanks.
There you is.
We have to go through the same thing for the county work? Paperwork, paperwork.
Yeah, we have to do it for each of the landowners.
I think I've signed the extra ones too, Carol. I think there's more. Part of that's the next one. On the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Half of that, yeah, fourteen probably. If there's more, yeah, somewhere in there.
The next item on the agenda is approve bank stabilization bid packets one and two for release. I hope we approve them because I just signed them.
Well, this, so this agenda item is intended to, for the county to give authorization for us to begin bid advertisement. So these first two projects, Rodney Carter and then Evans Klein, we're ready to, to advertise for bids for both of those. So that is what this agenda item is intended for. Um, if you make a motion and approve, we are going to upload the final plans and specs to our advertisement website. Uh, start publishing the advertisement in the local newspapers and we have some dates picked out for bid letting. I think August nineteenth and September second are the two dates we have picked out, so.
Good.
Um, with those dates, we'll get a contract executed in the next, in the three weeks to a month following. Uh, harvest will be going on at that time, so hopefully as soon as harvest is midway or good, getting towards finishing up, we'll have a contractor mobilize those sites and beginning to, to work. Uh, completion will be spring of next year to allow for seeding, vegetation establishment, so.
Well, and if we have an easy winter like we did last year, they can do it.
And th- these are actually projects, you're exactly right. These are projects that can be done in the winter for the most part. The rock work can absolutely be done in the winter and it's actually easier to do some of that.
Probably better to do in the winter.
Yeah, yeah, so just maybe a little bit of touch-up finish grading and seeding in the spring.
Okay, what do you think, guys?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the bank stabilization packet for one and two.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the bank stabilization bid packets one and two for release. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried.
And then some logistics on that. As far as putting it out, um, it will go in the two newspapers if we can. We'd like to also put it on the county website.
Sure.
Sure, if you have to get it to Patrick. Get it to Patrick.
Yep.
Yeah, and the, the bid documents, they will be available for download through our JEO website. We have a little bid advertisement section on our website. Contractors can go, um, download that. So wherever we post the advertisement, i.e. newspapers and, uh, your website, we can put a link, uh, right to our website, so contractors can go right there. i.e. newspapers and, uh, your website, we can put a link, uh, right to our website, so contractors can go right there and download the plans and specs.
And then they will bring the bids here to your office, probably. Um, and then bid opening, we have anticipated using Cory's, the building down there, the back room for bid opening, if that's agreeable to all of you. And we've talked to Cory, and he's said as long as the dates are open, that that would work.
So, yeah, and on that logistic-wise, we will have to get close bid opening at the correct time.
Yes.
Um, for receipt of bids here, and then if we're gonna do the opening...
I was gonna say, or do you just want them all to go down there, and then that way they're...
Why not just here?
No, we're...
Well, they're doing the bid opening down there.
We would close and open at the same time, generally. Um, so we may want to have them deliver down there.
'Cause you're looking at either the nineteenth, did you say, or the second?
Or nineteenth and the second. Are those both Wednesdays? Yeah. So the reason there with the Wednesdays is we want to have time to review the bids, tabulate the documents, make sure there's no math errors, and put it on your next agenda for the coming Tuesday to approve contract.
Okay.
Perfect. Perfect, perfect.
It really doesn't matter to me, but we will want, probably want them delivered to the place we plan on opening them, so... I don't think it really matters. Um, I will facilitate the bid opening. I'll be there twenty minutes ahead of time and make sure to close it off at the, at the time it needs to be, and then I'll read the bids aloud and, and, uh, take them back to our office and tabulate them, send them out, so...
Good. Perfect.
It has taken to get to this point. Isn't that amazing?
And...
Good job.
Yeah, I guess to put a little more context to it, say, for Rodney Carter, we have estimated eight hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. The other, uh, combination between the two landowners is a smidge over nine hundred thousand. So we're we're getting the two biggest projects.
Is that the Klein?
Evans Klein, it's a split between two landowners on that, on that site. So, yeah, we're using a lot of these funds on the first two large projects, which is...
Who?
Bob Waters, the idol, he's a water bureau.
Name sounds familiar, but I don't know.
And Rhonda Klein, she's been, she's the one I keep talking about, 'cause she's really been a lot of fun. She, uh, she met me in town by their place, and then I drove her out to where it was, because she didn't know where it was, um, got her in my truck.
Did you know her farm's dead?
No. No, I had not seen it since she was a child. She inherited it.
Oh, my gosh. So now they're gonna have a nice recreation pond?
No, they're doing bank stabilization.
Oh, this is just the bank.
So basically, what it is, is, and the, the big thing that we really had to go through this, Evans, or Klein was probably the most time-consuming and, uh, difficult sell, maybe, to say, because she was an absolute landowner, um, only looked at the dollars and cents. And we, I mean, Jake, their team put together a really nice presentation for us, uh, that showed historic loss.
Wow.
Um, and you and I really didn't...
I mean, that's gone. You're not gonna get that back.
No.
Wow.
That hit home a little bit. We, we kind of put it in terms of an average rate of loss per year. Average value of good farmland like that is. And that hit home a little bit, but it was, it took some...
So, yeah, but we got there.
Yeah.
That's probably the one I'm most proud of, because we did get it done.
So, I mean, do we want to receive bids, open them here, or down at, down at Cory's building? Doesn't, it does not matter at all, um, to us.
If it's gonna be during a board meeting, I just should be up here, but if it's gonna, if it's on a Wednesday or something, it's not a Wednesday.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter.
Wherever you want, I don't care.
We can just do it down here.
That's what, he said you'd assume do it here.
That's fine.
If it's on a meeting day, Tuesdays are meeting days, so, yeah, I don't care.
Whatever, yeah.
We can do it down there, and then, once, once it's done, I'll bring the bids
Sure.
up here, make copies, leave the originals with here, and then that'll work.
Yeah.
Done.
Okay, and then back to... Back to the Soil and Water Conservation, um, SWCD loans. We will, if that's okay with you guys, we'll need to just add that to their contract.
Yeah, just work with Tyler on it.
To be able for them to pay on the backside, or to, just basically those funds, when they get them, will come from... So, but we do want to require the approval upfront from SWCD and the state of Iowa before we go ahead with the project.
I'm gonna look.
Think we can have a meeting in September?
Huh? I hope so. I don't know. I don't know. It's rising again. Depends on if Oakland, Oakland Community Building, I don't think is still open.
I think we're having one this Thursday at Carson. You might try Carson. Carson has lots of meeting rooms. It's spread out.
As a Plan B, that's what I was gonna ask. Would you wanna, I mean, we could help facilitate doing, do something digital in September? Yeah, if we, if it's not able to be held in person.
The really nice thing about this is that we don't have, we don't have any action we have to take, other than updates on it.
Right, and that's why I, I wonder if there's other people in the...
Is there a direct line into here?
Who would like to hear enough of it?
Okay, have him call it there, just transfer it.
Okay. Because he's doing it digital. Um, what, since you have all of us here, do you guys have any questions or anything as far as the program, the projects?
No, I just think it's a wonderful project or program period, because, you know, especially when you open it up, open it up to the county, you know, we're gonna, I don't know if he's gonna take in another two projects or not, might be, I doubt it, but Cory.
We've got the two of his on the back burner if we find funding for that, and there may not be funding at this rate, um, as far as...
Yeah, but e- even if it's a twenty-five, thirty percent is better than, you know?
I talked on, on his in particular, on those two projects in particular. Um, I've been working with Ann Schmidt through IEDA, which you guys know that there is a program, um, of planning process that's going on right now, uh, with their grant that they received. And some of the projects that are potentially approved through IEDA, through this program in the future, could be infrastructure projects. So Ann told me, you know, to keep on and to leave those on that back burner, because should she receive some funding for specifically infrastructure projects, those two projects would fall right into place, they would be shovel-ready, and we could just jump right on them.
Okay.
So, um, we're leaving those two for sure on the back burner. Ponds and anything like that, that's the reason they are specifically in this program, is that there's probably no way I will ever receive funding for ponds or landowner projects. Infrastructure projects may be a little different.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. COVID's thrown a big
wrench.
wrench into everything, especially watershed stuff, but there's a lot of, there's still funds out there.
Okay.
So...
Thank you, guys.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
I'll scan all of these documents and send them to you.
Perfect, yeah. These other contracts just...
You have the other contracts, or you don't? Oh, and the other ones too? Okay.
They signed last week. You guys should have them.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
And Grant definitely needs them.
Okay.
You need it more than I do.
I'm the keeper, yeah, I'm the keeper, all the keeper.
I have it just for reference.
All righty, our next item on the agenda is to appoint Lorraine Zanders to the Conservation Board.
Thanks, thanks, guys.
But to fill George Marshall's term.
Health problem?
Yeah, George is just getting tired. He was living out in Arizona for a while there, and I think he's just staying out there. Ooh, it could be Utah. I thought it was Arizona, but now that you say that, it might be Utah. Away from here, though.
Yeah.
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 He was calling into a lot of our meetings here. He's just gonna come back over the summer. I think he...
And how did Lorraine get?
She's been interested for a very long time.
She has.
Yep, she put in an application with Jared a long time ago and told him she's just been, I heard dad was years ago.
Really?
Yeah, so she's, she's really interested, so...
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Lorraine Zanders to the Conservation Board, to fill the, the term with George.
We've got a motion and a second to appoint Lorraine Zanders to fill the unexpired term with George Marshall. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right, that concludes our meeting. We will see y'all next week.